Good morning. Today, good afternoon, sorry. Today is Tuesday, June 11th. We're here for our second day of the 25 fiscal budget. If you could please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, sorry.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor Solsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Chairman Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. First apartment up tonight is the mayor's office.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. Claudia Correa, Chief of Staff. So, I'm sure all of you have the packets in front of you. One of the things that I would like to mention that actually we did not add to the packets that you have in front of you regarding accomplishments is that we started drafting and improving the notification process with our Department of Public Works when it comes to any work that, any type of work that is being done in the city. Based on my 10 years of experience in the public sector, I learned that there is never enough communication with residents, and that's something that we're definitely working on, especially when we talk about water shut-offs or major work being done by National Agreed, as it was mentioned yesterday. We are definitely drafting something that we know will increase communication with residents, businesses, and local organizations. Also, yesterday was mentioned that we are working on a grant writer position. We think this will be really, really helpful for the city. As many of you know, there are a bunch of federal and state grants available for municipalities like ours, and our main goal is to bring in a grant writer that will help us bring in, we hope, good amount of money to serve our residents. And lastly, just a reminder that we work very closely with our Human Resources Department to make sure that the city is in compliance with state and federal regulations pertaining to labor laws, FMLA, and conflict of interest laws. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Claudia.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Councilor Gleyandro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Claudia, thank you. I just wanted to just get clarification on that extra million-dollar line item. In the, is it being transferred from another department? Or what is it? Could you just explain negotiations on Mr. Visca? Or Mr. Mayor, anybody?
There we go. Thank you, council. The million dollars is in the mayor's reserve salary account for anticipated collective bargaining settlement between police, fire, and DBW unions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is the Workforce Development and Youth Engagement Office.
Good evening, committee members. Jerry Visconti, Director of Workforce Development and Youth Engagement. I want to first start off by mentioning that some of the positions in this department were part of talent and culture last year, and since that department no longer exists, the mayor elected to have this department be its own department. If there are no objections from the committee, I can skip over the 2024 accomplishments. I weren't, I wasn't part of that, and quickly direct you to our goals and objectives of this new department, which I feel is more important than what was done in the past. The, it's broken up into three segments: workforce development, youth engagement, and labor relations. Let's start off with under workforce development. What we are looking to expand partnerships with local community organizations, creating internships and apprenticeship opportunities within the department for Revere residents. We also want to work with the union trades to educate Revere High School students and graduates, as well as Revere residents, on how to enter into the union. Believe it or not, people really don't know how to do that, and with the hopes of having them apply for their apprenticeship programs. For example, two weeks ago, we had a union trade fair that our department held in conjunction with the career counseling department with the city of Revere, I mean with the high school. We had all the major trades at the event, along with over 200 students, really getting them familiar with the union trades, having them talk to representatives in each individual trade, so they can build relationships and contacts as they determine which field or which path they wish to take. Under youth engagement, the city of Revere receives a youth works grant from Mass Hire each year. That has allowed the city to basically create and manage a paid internship program for students within our city. Students from City Lab, Revere High School, as well as our city departments have all benefited from this program. We interview, our department would go about interviewing and onboarding these students, trying to find out the different fields or industry they may want to pursue after high school, and then we try to find jobs for them, whether it's within city departments or outside businesses throughout the community, or even outside the community. The wages are paid directly through the youth works grant, through our department, so the salaries actually never hit the general fund, which in turn saves each department money. Labor is always needed in these departments, and it's great when you don't see it hitting the budget because it's paid through a grant. Currently, the grant services students that range from 14 years of age to 21, and we're teaching them the soft skills of workforce and getting them acclimated in the basics. As if funding becomes available, we would like to expand the program into a Tier Four program, which will allow us to help young adults from ages 22 to 25. This is more of a certificate-based program where the grant or the city that gets, receives the grant will pay for a certificate-based program, which at the end of the program gives the applicant a certificate, whether it's, let's take for example, an EMS or some kind of pharmaceutical tech, pharmacy tech applicant, and gives them, and makes them actually more marketable in the workforce. Finally, our department is working with the mayor's office to create a community service program for youth works employees, to volunteer a number of hours for community service, whether that be cleaning parks in each ward during the spring, summer, and fall, or shoveling snow for residents in the winter. The details of the program haven't been finalized, and I welcome all the city councilors and the ward councilors for any ideas that you may have. We're looking to help them be part of the community and really help out, you know, not just give them the job, but also ask them for some community service back to our city. I know if I, a few months back, I believe it was Councilor Haas, and I'm not sure if it was Councilor Sawoy as well, put in a motion a while back about the youth works employees for a paid shoveling program. That hasn't gone on deaf ears. It was just too late in the year to implement and decided to wait till the new budget comes out. And finally, in regards to labor relations, as you well know, we have a lot of union development happening in our city in, you know, over the next 10 years, primarily Suffolk Downs and the new high school, all union work. The mayor would like to build the, build stronger ties to the union trades and make sure that first preference for these union jobs are offered to Revere residents. So he has asked me to be the conduit between the trades in the city. I've, I've been in the union for quite some time and grew up on a union household, so I know the people involved, so building those rapport and that relationship is, is second to none and very easy for myself. In regards to expenses on this, the department, the majority of our salaries are grant slash Opera funded, which you can see are paid under other sources. So if you have any questions regarding that, I'm happy to answer them. And in regards to non-salary expenses, we rarely run a lean department that has probably a total of about $17,000 in non-salary expenses. Nothing that, it's, it's a department that's starting off, but we've decided to keep that as lean as possible. So that's all I have for you this evening, pretty basic. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilor Olesoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, I wish you good luck in this department.
Thank you.
One thing, a key thing that was brought up about snow removal.
Yeah.
I know we got the JROTC, the kids who shovel seniors' houses out.
Yeah.
And I notice a lot of seniors that are looking for way beyond what our capacity is in the JROTC.
Yeah.
But one thing, aside of all the seniors, is the city properties sidewalks.
Sure.
Around the parks, and I'll just give you Shirley Ave for an example, by Costa Park, coming off Walnut Ave and Shirley Ave, when it snows, nobody shovels that, and I get more complaints from residents about that. They said, "It's nice that the residents do their own sidewalks and the businesses do their own sidewalks," and we fine them for that, and we don't even take care of our own.
Yeah.
So I think one of the targets that we should have in using, utilizing some of these kids, whether the paid kids, if that's the way we're going to go, or the community service kids, whichever it is, it has to get done.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's imperative that we, that we force the issue, that we get all city sidewalks taken care of during snowstorms.
I, and, and I, I agree. Keep in mind, counselor, that we're dealing with 14- and 15-year-old kids too as well, and happy to try to accommodate that. We have on the city side as liability issues as well, trying to monitor them, but I understand your point, and we're happy to try. The, the details of the program hasn't been, haven't been finalized, so, you know, talking to the mayor, he knows about the, the snow removal is a concern, and we're looking to try to figure out, to help the residents as well as any, any other areas.
And we all do respect on the liability. We have people who are shoveling snow now. We have the JROTC kids.
Yeah.
It's liability. Everything's a liability.
I know, unfortunately, yes.
You know, and, you know, I know the 14-year-old kids, they're the youngest kids that should be working.
You're right. I remember shoveling at that age, right?
They're the ones that can handle it.
Yes. I remember shoveling at that age, and I was out there shoveling.
And, you know, I think it's good for them to get out, you know, and exert, exert their energy in helping the city.
I couldn't agree more.
So, you know, I don't, I don't buy the total liability issue.
No, no, listen, I'm, I'm not here making excuses for the 14- and 15-year-olds. I don't mind cracking the whip as well and, and having them work out there, but yes, your point is taken.
So, thank you.
Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Jerry, for your presentation. Getting back to my colleague there, I don't think that snow removal of city sidewalks is only youth. You know, we need to do that if it's the DPW or whoever has to do it. That's our responsibility. It should never be public spaces that we're not clearing, especially when we're fining citizens for, for not doing it. So, you know, we do that at the state. Unfortunately, there's never enough workforce to do sidewalks, but they have to be done.
Sure.
The public sidewalks, they, they have to be done anyways. That's aside from it. So you, you mentioned a lot of things, a lot of things that are in your purview now, which is good. You mentioned that most of your funding comes from grants and Opera funding.
Yes.
So that's where my concern is, because the grants may continue, hopefully, God willing, but the Opera Fund is not. And so, this is where, not just your department, but all these departments that have been working off of Opera funding, got to be weaned off it, and it's only a year away. So, you know, I know the mayor, I know the mayor is in tune with this, and I know the CFO is in tune with this, but, you know, we got to keep talking about it. I mean, I didn't pick on the mayor's department today because I didn't want to get into beating a dead horse, but there is a lot of work, and you, you, you mentioned that you're going to work hard on funding the high school. I just don't want it to be on the backs of the taxpayer. But, but this is, you know, this is something that I'm very concerned about. The money won't be there, and what are we going to do? We're not, we can't go to the taxpayer, so we've got to change the way we think. It's this, that this funny money is no longer going to be here. That's all I, I really got, but I'm, I'm happy that the mayor hired a professional for this position, and I look forward to good things with the youth in the city.
Thanks, council.
Go ahead.
Thanks, council. Councilor Gleyandro.
Can you let the mayor respond?
Oh. Mr. Chairman. I just, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Through you to the councilor. First of all, I, I appreciate what you noticed, because I did too, and I know, working with the CFO, we've, we've attritioned out and/or when a new opening comes up in the system, so maybe a parking clerk leaves, we are trying to fill them with people in Opera-funded positions. So we're, we're kind of, we're doubling up now. We're, we're losing a role that's Opera-funded and filling a role in the city and not costing anyone a job as people leave on their own. So we have cut the Opera-funded positions in more than half in the last year and a half, and we will, we will have 100%, there will be zero Opera-funded positions in the next budget, zero.
That's a prudent, that's a prudent approach.
Yeah, and it's, so it's, it's been really, it's been really good, but I, I do understand that that money doesn't last forever, and we've tried to stretch it out. We've put more into, maybe use some perpetuity like purchasing, we find it. Et cetera, so we fully understand you, and thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Gleyandro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, I'm really happy that you're working for the city.
Thank you.
And you're still a part of it. I would like to motion to change this to the Department of Snow Force Development, if we could, please.
Actually, we've been pretty good these last couple of years. We, you know, that, that snow removal fund is doing pretty good, isn't it? Rich?
I just, I just want to say that I, this looks very lean, and I was very happy to see the, the grant funding with the salaries as well, but I wish you the best.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say good luck, Mr. Visconti made an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
A lot of good things are going to be coming out of your department for a relatively small amount of money appropriated, so good luck, and I think you'll do a great job.
I appreciate that, council. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jerry, thank you for the, the presentation tonight. Congratulations. I wish you the best of luck. Just one question. In working with the unions, and can, is there a way to get their list of our residents so when, when we're asking companies to get into PLAs and require, they know that they have the backing behind that agreement, and they, that it's going to work out for them in, in the long run? And they know that the unions have the bodies from Revere, men, women, minorities, and we have the numbers on those?
In terms of the list of?
Workers, of the employees.
Okay.
From Revere.
They, I'll be honest, they don't give that out.
Okay.
Okay? But what we'll do is, and what my intentions are, as, I mean, as we move forward and as I move forward in the position, is to really sit down with the developer. Obviously, there's a new developer going in on Suffolk Downs, and the developer, when that time comes, for the high school, will, will meet with them to see how many Revere residents are being employed, and making sure that we have Revere residents here through the union that are available. But those calls will be made at, at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Councilor Olesoski.
To Jerry, just as an FYI, having been involved with a lot of developers, especially Shirley Ave and different things, I have found that they, they won't give you names of those Revere residents, but they will give you numbers of how many.
Oh, sure. The numbers are there.
They'll give you the numbers, same thing, because I, I was pushing on our veterans' building, how many veterans were hired to build the building.
Yes.
And they were given that, giving that to me on a monthly basis of how many veterans were being utilized to build the building, so.
Yeah, and, and as restriction, as, as the, the department moves along as well and gets activated, we will in turn start compiling that information, obviously, so we have, the mayor's office has the, the accurate information of who's working at these sites and how many Revere residents. They have to keep a minimum, I believe, of, I think it's 10 or 20%, I forget what the number is, to adhere to the, the PLA that was there, and we'll make sure that as we get acclimated that, that that's, that's done, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Please name and address for the record.
My name is Anthony Cantino. I live at 240 Suffolk Avenue, Revere, Massachusetts. And one of the questions I'd like to ask, ask the gentleman here is if he has any influences in obtaining licenses to obtain this type of work that he's talking about. Do you have any influence regarding licenses?
If, if you could speak through here?
Do you, do you have any influence in obtaining licenses for well-experienced people?
Right.
Yeah, so, so sir, is this, does this have anything to do with our budget process?
Well, yes.
How is that?
I pay for it.
Oh, okay, well, if you, if you wouldn't mind maybe going to sit.
I don't get it for free.
I understand, but if you wouldn't mind going maybe to sit back with Mr. Visconti and ask him that, so we can continue the process?
Well, the mayor is right here, and he can pass that license right away?
Mr. Chairman, he is asking questions about a personal issue.
Sir, you're, you're now, you're now asking questions about a personal business. This is the budget process for the city, so we can't deal with this business right now. No.
Well, that's personal.
No, this is the city's budget.
Unions of.
This is the city's budget.
And children, and so forth, and so on, but, well, that's personal.
Yes, i- it is, but this is the city's budget. Okay, so I'm, I'm asking you to turn off the mic, please, sir.
Why? What's the matter? Don't you want to hear it?
No, I'm asking you if you could please step outside and ask him the question.
Well, thank you, sir. No, no, I'm here at the city council.
I know, but this is the budget process.
He's talking about unions and.
Anthony, it's not a council meeting, it's the budget process.
Well, all right, and I'm going to pay for it.
Not the budget process, this is not the city council meeting, this is a budget.
Sir, would you like me to talk to you?
Thank you.
Come on, go talk. You want to talk to me, too? You want to talk to me? Yeah, sure.
I did, I was trying to figure it out, but it wouldn't.
Next up is the Human Resources Budget.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Lina Tramelli, and I'm the Director of Human Resources. I know you all received the budget package, but I want to emphasize some things that we do in the HR. So the Human Resources Department plays an important role in the city by providing essential support and training to employees, by ensuring compliance with various regulations and laws, enhancing customer service across all departments, and promoting a safe and healthy work environment. In line with our goal to expand services and meet the needs of our diverse community, we have to, we incorporated different positions under HR, which include community school, language access, ADA coordinator, and DEI. To maintain a high standard of service and compliance, we have implemented several training processes and programs, such as OSHA 10 training for DPW employees, also Hoisting and CDL trainings, also de-escalation and First Amendment trainings for all the employees, and for management employees, sorry, and employees management and FMLA training for department heads. We also embrace, want to embrace technology, and we wanted to improve efficiency and employees' experience. So as right now, we are in the process of implementing the Employee Self-Service System, which is a system that allow, is going to allow employees to access and manage their personal information, payroll details, and benefits online, and is going to be so convenient for them. And also, we implemented a digital version of change forms, which is the form that we use for updating information on the employees, and this reduces as well the paperwork. Lastly, but not least, recognizing the hard work and dedication of employees is essential for maintaining the high morale and promoting success in, in the city. So we implemented the Employee of the Month Recognition Program, and we are continuing with employee appreciation events. So, thank you for your consideration, and I'm here, ready to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for, very much for that.
Thank you.
And any questions from the council? Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Tramelli. Just a couple of housekeeping questions here. So FY '24, the payroll permanent salaries was 151,000. This year, it's 377,000. I deducted the $60,888 for the new ADA position. What is the reason for the other $162,000 in the payroll?
Sorry, I will refer that question to Richard Skay.
Thank you for the question, counselor. The biggest jump in the salary budget is the combining of the Talent and Culture Department with the Human Resources, which brought over our DEI Director. That salary is now in the Human Resource Department. We also have combined into their, well, we do have an ADA coordinator that we're looking to hire. That is a fully funded by Grant Dollar's position, but primarily it is the DEI Director that's part of the Human Resource Department. You'll see that there's about $180,000 worth of other sources of salary. One point, two, five of the employees are paid from the Health Insurance Trust, those that administer the Health Insurance Trust and the benefits of the city. And we do have 50% of our language access specialists funded through Opera Funds, again, 100% last year, 50% this year, looking to attrition that out. And again, we are proposing to hire an ADA coordinator to help with, help our handicap in our ADA residents with initiatives.
I have that that position's currently filled. Is that incorrect on here?
It's, it's not currently filled, it's a new position.
ADA Coordinator under Human Resources?
It's proposed in the 2025 budget, but we have not hired a full-time ADA coordinator just yet.
And I'm not trying to beat at that horse here, but there is a name next to the position on append, what is it, 993, page three?
Oh, I'm looking at the actual budget itself, but maybe that was a little bit in anticipation of a hire.
of a hire.
Understood, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Tramelli, for coming up. I just have a couple, could you just explain to me community school? I'm just not familiar with.
So, yeah, give me one second. Community school is a program that we have, as of right now, we have, I don't know if you're familiar with Fatu?
Okay.
She's the one who runs the program.
Okay.
So I think we have more information in the package that you receive.
I'm having- Okay. Community school was a program that was run by the school department for several years, and we then had moved that over into our Park and Recreation Department for a year, but with the reorganization, now we feel like this is a better fit as part of the Human Resource Department, so.
I just don't know what it is.
Oh, it's like English second language classes and adult education at night. It's basically night school for adults.
Okay, is there a charge for that, to go to the school?
Yeah, they actually have a revolving fund that they use, but the salary for the Director is a general fund appropriation in this budget.
Okay.
And there was a request for $30,000 for expenses for that, but we reduced that to zero for fiscal year 2025 due to the balance in the trust and the revolving fund that we feel would be sufficient for 2025 operations.
Okay, so there's a community school revolving fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I was just wondering why the entry for the stipend and also the employee recognition seemed to be significantly increased? Do we know why?
Which particular line? Well, the employee recognition was actually $50,000 that we reduced to fiscal year 2024 level at $35,000. So that's level funded for fiscal year 2025. As far as the stipends go, I'm trying to, yeah, I mean, again, the DEI Coordinator was moved from Talent and Culture into this, and they carried the majority of that, about $51,000 there. And the other stipends just have to do with education benefits. Those exempt employees are subject to educational benefits for their master's, bachelor's, or associate's degree, so it's just rolled up into that line. But basically, it just driven up because of the combination of health and, I mean, the Human Resource Department with the Talent and Culture Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is 311, Constituent Services.
Good evening, Nick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, committee members, hope everybody's well. Nick Romano, Director of Constituent Services. First, I'll begin with a brief overview of a few organizational changes within 311. 311 was originally created under the Office of Innovation and Data Management. Seven years and 200,000 calls later, Revere 311 has grown into its own department and a reliable community resource in the city. This new fiscal year, the Office of Innovation and Data Management is being incorporated into the IT budget, which Mr. Pazos will explain in a little bit. Other major changes, the Office of Consumer Affairs has moved under this Constituent Service Office. This way here, we'll be able to streamline constituent services all from one place. I'm sure you've seen enough numbers already, but just to run through a few, I'd like to highlight, Revere 311 is projected to answer 35,000 calls by the end of this fiscal year. Of those 35,000 calls, 93% of them are answered within 45 seconds. Such efficiency would not be possible without our amazing team, Rahul, Jacob, Marie, huge shout-out to those guys for all the great work that they do for the city. 7,000 service requests have been opened and assigned to various departments throughout the city. Counselor Novoseltsky makes up for 140 of those. Since 311 was created, Counselor Novoseltsky has submitted 1,375 service requests. So I don't know to thank you or be concerned, but, yeah. I think we'd be pretty busy still, but we appreciate it. In addition to the always busy call center, we do have a constituent service window. We keep track of the residents that we assist there. We have assisted over 1,000 residents in person. 12% of these interactions are a language other than English. In the 311 office, we can provide English, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Portuguese. With that being said, we look forward to another year of assistant Revere residents, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thanks, Nick. Any questions from the council? Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. You do a great job, and we worked well together over the years. I just have one question. The Consumer Affairs, with the changes to that, are we still eligible for that grant?
Yes. Everything is in compliance with-
Okay, and are you still servicing, was it 12 or 14 communities?
It's 14 communities.
14 communities, okay. And the grant's still intact?
Still intact.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Nick, thank you for the presentation. I hate to complain about a much lower number, like $200,000 less, when it comes to computer operations. The question I have is, will that number have to go up again in the future, back to 273?
So that's part of the Office of Innovation being moved over to the IT budget? So you'll see that most of these softwares that the city uses, it has moved to George's Department. So the reduction you see here will be an increase for George.
So they're no longer your responsibility, essentially?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. More comments than anything else, being number one in the hit parade. I can't tell you how much I believe in the 311 system. Filtering everything through 311 is the best way to go. You know, it hits every department all over the city, and I have found, even when some items get closed out, whether on purpose or by accident, I get hold of Nick, it's reopened, and it gets right back to the department. And I think this was a great program that they put together, and I will continue to be number one. I won't have to try harder, and I think it's just a great program. The only thing I'm asking is, I was looking at the total salary appropriated, but I think I should be looking at the base salary requirement, so that's, I'll leave it at that as far as the call center representative and your salary, so. But, you know, I'm very pleased with this department, and I hope it continues, and I tell more people to use it. You know, it's very, very important to have a central group of people to reach out to, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Zambrano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Nick. Thanks for your presentation. I remember you when you were an aide to the mayor, and you've come a long way, and your reputation precedes you here. You know, I speak to a lot of people, and you're very highly respected because of what you do. And nowadays, people call me, and they say, "I've already called 311." So you've come a long way from when we started this. Nobody knew what the hell 311 was, and it really is a wonderful thing now. I guess the only couple of questions I have is, I know you do a tremendous amount of volume of calls. What is the average time from a call that comes in and it's assigned to an agency or a division? When is, what's the average closeout on these calls?
It really depends on what people are calling about. You know, you could call about a pothole, and, you know, that pothole could be filled that day, or it could be filled in a few days. You know, it really depends on many things, you know? If it's raining, you know, it's going to take a little longer to fulfill that request. But we're able to track the data on how long it takes to close a certain amount of service requests. So again, it really varies.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, you know, obviously, there's easy fixes and hard fixes. I guess the aggregate, combined, you know, are we talking a week, a month?
Put it this way, 98% of service requests that are opened are closed the same year.
Wow.
So.
That's great. That's fantastic.
Yep.
Okay, again, I thank you for your service, and we're happy to have you here, and you've come a long way, and you brought us a long way, especially those that, like me, that might have been a little skeptical of 311 in the beginning. I became a believer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Hey, Nick, great job, and always a great job in 311. You answer the phone every time I call, so it's, I'm sure it's like that for everyone else. This might be a better question for Director Pazos. Have we done like an audit on the systems we're using to make sure that every system we're using is?
Okay. So yes, we have. That was part of our goals for last year. That'll come up during the presentation, but there has been a software audit inventory completed.
Thank you.
Sure.
And that was really my only question, Nick. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to save Rich's departments for last, so the next department's going to be purchasing.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Counselors. Michael Picardi, purchasing agent for the city. Purchasing not really the most exciting department all the time, but we have had some exciting happenings going on. We did finally switch over to all electronic purchase orders, which I know you, Counselors Avetry and Argenzio, know that the past, we've had like three, four, or five people signing it, takes a couple of days. Now it automatically prints. It's beautiful. We have managed to transition all of our copy machines over to one company, getting us a better rate by all of us using KeyoSarah. And right now, we're just finalizing contracts for project manager for the new McKinley School, rehabilitation of McKinley School. I will. Other than that, it's business as usual. And any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the council? Counselor Zambrano.
More comments than questions, but, Mike, you do a great job, and I don't, I don't, obviously, I always tell the truth up here, so if you weren't doing a great job, I wouldn't be bringing that up. But over the years, and I don't want to shed any bad light on any past employees and so forth, but over the years, I got a lot of complaints about purchasing for different reasons, you know? Wasn't moving quick enough, and POs, whatever. But I haven't had a complaint since you've been in charge. So that's a wonderful testament to your professionalism, and I'm just happy you're in that position, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Counselor Novoseltsky.
Same thing, more comments. Having worked in state purchasing, you know, I knew the system back then, and when I came to Revere, again, got a lot of complaints. More duplicate work, you know, redoing things, you know, not accepting things that were questionable, which I can understand that sometimes. But, you know, since you've been on board, Michael, you know, things have been run so smoothly, I get a lot of good comments about purchasing now, which I feel good about, knowing that it's within the City Hall and within the city confines, that things are really working in every department, Mayor Self. You know, I can say yours right now, but I have found this in every department in this city has been upgraded about 90% of what it used to be. And I congratulate you on that, and I congratulate the former mayor and the current mayor for keeping you on board and bringing you on board, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Mike, great job. Thank you for the presentation. Again, it's never easy with a two-person office, and you pull it off, so congratulations, kudos, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Next up is Information Technology.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Pazos.
My name is George Pazos. I'm the IT Director for the city. Just to, want to quickly go over a few of the departmental accomplishments of the last fiscal year. In the fall, we upgraded Tyler Munis, which is our main financial system for the city. We upgraded that to the latest and greatest version that that's on. A lot of what you're hearing, both from HR, what they're planning on implementing this year, and, you know, for example, Michael's, Picardi's example of POs, a lot of that is virtue of being on the latest and greatest version of that software. That was sort of the last piece of a multi-year journey. You've heard me up here the last several years, talking about our process of upgrading Munis and improving a lot of our processes, and that was sort of the capstone. So now we're moving on and working on process improvements using the software. We also completed a software inventory and an audit, so we now know, you know, we now have a more clear picture of what is licensed, when renewals are up, where it is budgeted from or was budgeted from. So that is a very important piece for us to be able to kind of understand and manage all of these different software applications that the city uses. We've begun implementing a time and attendance. This is essentially replacing punch clocks initially at DPW. We're going from paper punch clocks, where someone had to manually tally up times and things like that off of a time card, and now that is going to an automatic system that is fed into payroll. So instead of spending time keying things, people are now spending time auditing payroll and sending it on to be processed by payroll. So that is starting in DPW, and eventually will be rolled out more broadly. And also, as you heard, we consolidated the Department of OIDM into IT. So that brought two staff into our department, and also all of the software applications that were previously over there are now within my budget. And again, most of these accomplishments are in line with our goals from last year, as stated last year. Our goals for the upcoming year is to begin the implementation of the Human Resources modules within. So we own the Human Resources module, an existing module, within Munis. We are expanding the use of that a little bit more aggressively, and then adding a few modules, such as recruiting, onboarding, and something called Employee Access or Employee Self-Service. So those will be coming online this year. Something that we're doing, which isn't very exciting, but we are overhauling roles-based access within Munis. Again, not very exciting- Again, not, not very exciting, but what this does is, is essentially, is all of, it's revamping the internal controls within our financial system. So many of you have probably seen recent news articles of things that have happened in other communities. Having roles-based access within Munis is one step in preventing those types of incidents from happening here. So again, not exactly a very exciting topic, but incredibly important for our operations. We are going to continue to expand and improve our use of data and dashboards across a variety of different departments and try to get information in front of department heads and decision-makers. And then lastly, we'll, beginning in the new fiscal year, begin issuing official email addresses, revere.org email addresses to all of the boards and commission members that are out there. And so that's, that budget request is, is in here as well. So other than that, generally, the IT budget that you see before you, it's annual software subscriptions, managed services through Thrive, which is our managed service provider for IT services and telecommunications costs. So I do want to just point out in the budget, you'll see that the overall non-payroll budget increased $332,000. $187,000 of that is just a transfer from OIDM, bringing that in. The balance of that, which is about $145,000, is made up mostly of the council order 5566, 5673, which was to issue email addresses to boards and commission members. There is approximately $43,000 in HR-related costs to that work that is being done in the, with the HR modules. And then there are other increases just in general licensing cost increases for certain applications. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, George. Any questions from the Council? Council?
Just one quick question. Thank you, Mr. Pesos, for coming. I probably should have asked Human Resources this. With all these new softwares that are coming in, is there a training program for the employees that use these things? It's not just a brief?
Specifically, the HR piece of that?
Well, or any of these softwares, as they come on board, what kind of a training program do you give the?
So we usually do that as part of an implementation. So for example, with the time clocks, we've had training for the supervisors and actually the people who are punching in. Follow-up, and they'll, they'll need to be follow-up and regular training on that, but we normally incorporate that as part of our implementation plan. So there's training for the administrators, there's training for people like the HR director who will need to know, or the payroll people, their, their work is going to change slightly. So they'll be training for them, but there's also training for end users that may be affected. So yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming on board, George. Every year in April or May, we get emails saying, I think it's Munis is being shut down and can't do any more purchase orders for a month or so. And, and that continues into July, beginning of July, until I guess Munis can get going. Doesn't that slow down from people getting, trying to get work done and getting a purchase order pushed through, instead of having it held up for a month, month and a half?
So it's, it's not typically that Munis is shut down. Munis is, is up and fine. It's more of an operational procedural thing that, that the city goes through, which I'm sure Rich can mention.
Yeah, Council, we, every year annually, you know, we have to, we have to draw the line on opening purchase orders, because when we get to year-end, we got to make sure that we close the books without any deficits. So for the most part, we try to let people plan ahead to say, hey, you should know what you need for the last month of business, otherwise you're going to have to wait for the new fiscal year to open, because the budget will be adopted for 2025, we load that information in. Then once we load that information in, we can open up the books for 2025. But we can't allow people to keep opening up POs right until June 30th, because first of all, most things can wait until the new fiscal year. We're trying to get some turnbacks and trying to, we're not, we're trying to avoid Christmas in June, as we call it. You got extra money, you're going to try to spend it all, so you should be planning ahead. So any open purchase order of a good or a service that isn't delivered in this fiscal year gets carried forward to fiscal year 25, so you don't lose those dollars, as long as you have a purchase order open. But we do have to close the books, because we have to do some year-end entries, will usually come before you at the end of the year, to move money around so that we close the books with no deficits.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I may, what do they do in emergencies?
Well, we always, we always address emergencies. I mean, some emergencies are poor planning on department heads, but for the most part, if there's a true emergency, we, we, we don't shut them off.
Okay. I'm, I'm just checking, because I, you know, I want to know what's, what's happening, because there's a period of maybe six weeks that they can't do purchase orders. And, you know, to me, that's a long time, you know, for operation-wise.
For the most part, I think we have it under control, and the departments are kind of used to the process right now. And we don't shut them off on their special revenue funds or their capital funds, which are year-over-year, but those appropriations are good from July 1st to June 30th, so we have to close the books on those general fund appropriations and enterprise fund appropriations that the council votes. Anything that's a year-to-year revolving fund or a capital fund, we continue to process. It's just those appropriated funds.
Okay, you know, just inquiring on another thing regarding IT and attacks, cyber attacks. Okay? Have we been attacked at all, or attempted to be attacked, you know, in the, within the past year? That people have opened up an email the wrong way, or an attachment the wrong way, or someone calls and makes a comment that, for them to react to something, and they did react. You know, what do we do?
So we've been fortunate that we have a pretty good user base that is very suspicious of emails that they get. I think that is in part because we try to impress upon them that, that would be awful, how bad that would be. They see it in the news, so they don't want to be in the news. And we do, also do security awareness training for all our users. So we try to impress upon them how important it is to, to be extremely careful in everything that they do. The other thing that we try to encourage them is just to not be afraid to call us. We get calls where people say, I feel like an idiot, and I don't know if this is really something I should be calling about. We try to impress upon them, I'd rather you call and it be nothing, and we can have a good laugh over it, than you think, no, maybe not, and it's actually something that we should be worried about. So there, there have been attempts, obviously. I think the most common thing that we see would be the payroll scam, where someone emails supposedly from a, an employee, and they will say, hey, I need to change my direct deposit information. And those emails come through. Now, those emails sometimes are hard to catch en masse, and internally, we have really good processes that, that foil that, without getting into the details in a public forum. There are, there are, there are things that we do internally where that actually would not work or be successful, so.
And the reason I ask, if I may, Mr. Chairman, you know, I got a suspicious email from the mayor the other day, and I couldn't figure out why.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo. And just so aware, it's now Christmas in May.
We got a stand-up comic over here. Thanks for your presentation. So a lot of your stuff is upgrading, obviously, and as, as technology improves, and, and if I have one criticism, it might be that we don't do enough training, cyber training. I work for the state, and I go through hours and hours of training so that I don't. But I have, you know, stu, picked up the phone thinking it was a stupid question, and they said, no, you're, you're right, it is, don't touch it, you know, delete it. So, you know, if, if anything, I delete, but I, I never, never open anything, because it, there's just so much, so many scams out there, especially on a big system. We're really in tough shape if somebody does that. I think you do a great job, and, but I do have some, something to talk about, because the upgrades are to make our system obviously user-friendly, so that we're more friendly to the customer and, and we're more efficient. So I had an issue as a customer. I was purchasing a irrigation meter for somebody, for my dear friend and campaign manager. And we were told the procedure, and the procedure was to call a plumber, have him take out a permit, then you go down to DPW, and you purchase the, the unit. So I get the email back from my plumber, it says zero balance, permit issued. So I send her down to get her a meter. Well, she can't get it, because the meter, the permit's not paid for, but it says zero balance. So now I take a couple of hours off the next day or the two days later and go down to DPW, and I have it on my phone, zero balance. And I said, give me the meter. Here's the $450 or whatever for, for the meter. And no, the permit's not paid for, or how can it not be paid for? So we called, and there's a glitch. And so I lost my stuff. I said, here I'm a city councilor, thinking that we're more efficient nowadays, and there's a glitch. So it's probably a communications problem, because if there's a glitch, you should be called immediately. You're the professional, we shouldn't have glitches, especially in a system like this. And the glitch is that it went to a zero balance when you put in irrigation meter, it goes to a zero balance, which it's not supposed to. It's supposed to go to $55, and then when that's paid, it's issued and everything's right. So, I mean, it sounds like a simple thing, it's a simple fix, but it should have been fixed the first day. I shouldn't have heard on the other end of the phone, there's a glitch. And, and, you know, and then it turned into, well, let me pay it over the phone. Well, when I try to pay it over the phone, I have to pay a surcharge, because I want to pay a debit, but you can't take a debit over the phone. So what I'm saying is, listen, I've been around here a long time, I'm a 25-year-plus city councilor. We're trying to be more friendly to the customer. And when I run into something like this, I really lost my stuff. And I was probably rude to the employees and shouldn't have been, and I owe apologies, but the bottom line is that if, if somebody in a department has a glitch, that glitch has to go to you immediately and should be fixed. And, and so that's my only criticism. And when I'm, I'm bringing it out here, so that if anybody in any department has a glitch, it's, you deal with it now, you don't tell three, four, 10, 20, 30 people, oh, it's, that's a glitch, because that's not user-friendly.
No, I agree, that's not an answer.
And now you've, you know, it was better off when we were primitive. So, so my beef is, I don't want any glitches. But other than that, and, and I think, you know, I really think it's just a communication situation. I think that everybody has to, has to know that they can call you immediately and you'll work on that glitch, because we don't want glitches. We, we, we're up to date and modern and doing stuff online, and it's got to be efficient, there can't be glitches.
Understood, I agree.
Other than that, it wasn't directed at you, it's just, I'm, I'm putting this out there so that if any department head hears this, you never say there's a glitch.
I, I agree.
Thank you for it.
And I can definitely look into that case, because I'm not, I'm not aware of it, but I will look into it.
I, I think it came to you through the city clerk afterwards, but I, I think I put in a call and whatever. I think I'm, I'm assuming it's fixed, but I, I have no way of knowing that without trying to do the same procedure again. But thank you very much.
Thank you, George. That was excellent. I just have a couple of questions. So on the, these systems, for most of them, I couldn't tell you what they are or what they do, but I did have experience with the Laserfish system.
Yes.
Now, when Ruben was here, he came in, he taught us, it seemed like it did a ton of stuff, but then we only ended up using it to kind of save information? Is the city use it in a broader way that it's worth using, or?
Yes, so that's a document repository.
Yes.
As, as far as many other municipalities, we're in a fortunate position to have a document repository. So things like contracts stored in Laserfish.
Got it.
All right, so the, the real advantage of a document repository is if you keep things in a filing cabinet, and you want to go looking for them, you need to know how they are filed, right? As opposed to, do you want to know, how many landscaping contracts have we given out? Well, you can search Laserfish for landscaping, and in every instance of the word landscaping shows up. So it's, it's, it is, it's a document repository, and understanding the power of that is, is very important, so.
Understand. So in a, in a single department, it's, it's used a lot broader in the city as a whole?
Correct.
Yes. That's really it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is assessor's office.
Good evening, Dana.
Good evening, Councilors. Dana Branch of 40, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the operations of the assessor's office, so I think I'll spare you the review of our narrative that's in front of you, but I'm certainly here to answer any specific questions, if you have them. I did want to jump into the numbers, if we could. The assessor's office probably being one of the few offices that is actually seeing an overall budget reduction for this year. The reason for that is we have a, an open clerk position that we're choosing not to fill. So as you kind of just discussed with, with George, city's made a lot of investments in technology and software upgrades over the last couple of years, so certainly allowing us to be a lot more efficient. You mentioned Laserfish, we, you know, we utilize Laserfish. We collect some of our applications through that, some of our forms. So again, it's allowing us to, to do more with less. So with that, we did choose not to fill that position. So that's pretty much the major change this year.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions from the Council? Oh, you're the lucky candidate tonight. Have a great night.
Play the lottery tonight, huh? Thank you.
Next up is the school department budget.
Good evening, Dr. Kelly.
Hi, everybody. So just a few brief highlights. I know that you all got full copies of the budget, but I just wanted to highlight some key points. First of all, our budget was increased this year by just over $7.7 million, which is fantastic and a lot of money. It's the fourth year that we've seen the Student Opportunity Act implemented, which has been incredibly helpful to the school department. But it was less this year than it was last year. You might recall that we had a $17 million increase. So we're being a bit more conservative this year than we, than we were last year, adding fewer positions. We've also come to the end of the road in terms of our ESA funding, which has been incredibly important to us over the last several years since COVID happened. And so we've moved $2.5 million of instructional staff into our regular budget, and between that and regular raises and cost of living increases and things like that, the $7 million goes very quickly. We are, for that reason, mobilizing $8 million of our carryforward funding, and we are also seeing about a $600,000 increase in raises that were awarded to employees who participate in the insurance program, and that was through an agreement with the PEC. Is that right, Rich? Okay. But we should see some cost savings in the school budget through the Schedule 19 adjustment there for insurance chargebacks. And we were also able to see, over the last couple of years, a significant decrease in the cost of our tuition payments for students that are outplaced, and also in the amount of money we had been budgeting for cleaning services each year. Those contracts have been renewed and reduced, and so this budget accounts for those. So all in all, our overall FY '25 budget is $150,714,834, and that includes that $7 million increase that I spoke of. The vast majority of the money goes to salaries. We have $83.4 million going for instructional services, $13.8 for other student services, which includes the employment. which includes the employment of our paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, et cetera. And then 14 million for programs with other schools, and that's typically students who attend charter schools that the city still has to pay the tuition of. I'm flipping forward to funding sources, which I believe is on page 12 of this section of your budget. It's got a little pie chart in it, and you'll see there that the actual amount of money that we'll spend this year is $172.5 million, and that includes the funding from state and federal grants that we pursue each year. And then just another highlight I wanted to make was in staffing. As I mentioned, last year we had a $17 million increase and were able to hire about 80 teachers, create 80 new teaching positions that didn't exist prior to that. This year, with the reduced increase, and I don't mean to make seven, to minimize the $7 million, but we've only added 23 positions. And of those 23 positions, 19 are instructional staff, the four are in other categories. One is an assistant principal at the high school that didn't exist before, and one is a new early childhood coordinator that we're bringing onboard now to start seeking grant funding so that when our fabulous McKinley project happens, we're ready to go with funding to have a full-day early childhood program for the children of Revere. And I think, I think those are the highlights, but any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
I should, I should have just briefly mentioned that roughly 28% of our funding comes from the city of Revere, and we're very thankful for that. And the other 72% comes from state and federal funding.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any questions from the council? Councilor Conley Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions really aren't about monies, because it's kind of pointless for us to talk about that, because we're going to approve it anyway. But from what I'm reading, we have $10 million in reserves so that you can put towards next year, or even this year if you needed it?
What we're hoping we can do, so we have two years left in the Student Opportunity Act, two years of funding left, and that would be for fiscal '26 and fiscal '27.
Okay.
And after that, we anticipate that we'll have very little increases in the year-to-year. So fiscal '28 is one we're really worried about, and we expect to hit a funding cliff. And so that reserve, that $10 million, we're hoping to filter through till FY '28 and use that to get us through '28 and '29 before we have to think about staffing decreases.
Understood. Just a couple more, Mr. Chairman. This just came up today, but do you have, does the school department have a grant writer, or is that something that people within the department already handle?
We don't have a specified grant writer, but the curriculum directors and the assistant superintendents and I write grants all the time.
What is the difference between a director and a principal?
So principals oversee a particular school building. The curriculum directors oversee areas. So we have a STEM director that oversees science, math, technology, and engineering. We have a humanities director who oversees history, social studies, English. The art director oversees all of the fine arts programming, et cetera. We have about nine directors in total.
Okay, so it's, one oversees a school, the others oversee programs.
Correct.
And the last question is, the $30 million in ARPA funding, is there any of that left? And if so, what are we using it for?
We still have about $8.5 million left, and we're using that for the McKinley building project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Kelly, for coming up and talking about your budget. And we have no control of your budget, but I respect you for coming up here, because on my 25-plus years on the city council, most of them, I was ignored by the superintendent, because we had no control over the budget and they didn't want to come up and even talk about it. So I respect the fact that you come up here and at least talk to us about your budget. And you know I criticize you when I think you need it, and so I have to praise you when I think you need it, and this is that time. So thank you very much.
Councillor Novoselvsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Of ARPA staff, how many, how many have you hired, and how many are you carrying over into a permanent position?
I should look at that more specifically, but through the course of ARPA, over all the years, we've, we initially started paying for new positions through ARPA to use that money effectively, and each year we've pulled a portion of them into our regular budget. So as of this year, all employees that we hired through ARPA are in the regular school budget. The one exception that I'll name is that there were a number of positions that we hired specifically due to COVID. In particular, we had health liaisons that worked with each one of our nurses to help manage an office if a student was coming down presenting with COVID symptoms, but we need, so we needed to isolate that child, so we needed more people on hand. As those folks have decided to leave the district, we've not filled those positions. But we've been able to maintain all of the social workers, guidance counselors, EL teachers, and special educators. We ramped up a lot on all of those positions over the last few years, and we've maintained all of them in this budget. We've also maintained the fine arts program, which we expanded significantly in the last few years, the last three years. We named a fine arts director, we created a theater program at the high school, we now have a music and a dance program at the high school. So those are things that didn't exist, and it's, it's kind of hard to say whether it's because of ESF or Student Opportunity Act. Those two funding sources came together to enable us to really provide those services that all kids need, and that we should have been providing all along but just couldn't afford to.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for coming. I'm just curious about the McKinley School. Could you just give me a brief description of that? I really don't know too much about it. I know it's early childhood. How many students? When do you anticipate opening the doors?
So we are working with the city to rehab the McKinley building into a multipurpose facility, and the plan is that it will house an early childhood center that will have nine early childhood classrooms, roughly 15 kids in each one of them. And it's also going to house, I don't want to get this wrong, what's that police organization?
MREC, yes. So, thank you. So the McKinley School, the plans and the master plan for McKinley School will be to house early childhood education, which will be the mainstay, much needed in the community. As we know, in the Governor Hilli administration is initiating some, some grants to drive gateway cities to have free ECE for cities like Revere. On top of it, we wanted to partner with the growing demand on the MREC, and we know that there's need to eventually reestablish a more operable REC center, 911 call center. We have a regional center with Winthrop. We are engaging in talks to bring in one more community, but there's a significant amount of grant promise out there to build an official, officially new center, about 11,000 square feet, would be dedicated to the MREC. And then the last small square footage, about 4,000 square feet, we're using the $2 million from the Food Hub grant that we received to establish a community-type kitchen in the basement of the building. So that is in the master plan. If all the cards align, we're going to have, you know, well over 90% of it funded through grant, grants, and we should be able to do this with a very little light lift. Thank you.
Okay, so, Dr. Kelly.
I'll just, I'll just add for the public that we have an early childhood program already at several of our elementary schools, and we don't anticipate that going away. What we are looking for at the McKinleys to really target a full-day early childhood program, right now we only have partial day. So some kids come in the morning for two and a half, three hours, and then a different group of kids come in the afternoon. And there are some kids who just need more services than that, and so we're going to maintain all of the early childhood classrooms that we already have, so these would be in addition to the program that we already have, and therefore boost the opportunity for residents in general.
Oh, perfect. That was my next question. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again.
Just, Councillor Conley Andrew also has another question, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Revere Boxing, are they staying in the McKinley?
They will move eventually when we have to start construction on the building. And so that's a piece that we have to figure out. I've talked to Joe about that a little bit. We've got to figure out at least a temporary solution for them. Ultimately, when the new high school is built at Wonderland, we'll have a lot of resources and a lot of opportunity at the existing building, but we've got to figure out what's going to happen in those in-between years, which I anticipate will be like two or three years.
Yeah, I would, I would be adamant about making sure that program stays alive.
It's a fantastic program.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Novoselvsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the levity on it. Regarding the McKinley School, I know it's an old building. You know, number one, where is all the money coming from? I know there's mention grants, and I know it has to be gutted to a point. You know, I'm sure there's asbestos in there, and, you know, I don't know why people are using it now. You know, it may, may not be open asbestos, but it's still, it may be contained, but it's going to have to be taken out. And how many floors are you using? What are the other floors going to be used as? Are we going to have to put an elevator in there, make it handicap accessible? You know, being in the business like Councillor Zambudo, you know, we're concerned about that stuff. You know, my wife was ADA, and I was always emphatic about making places ADA accessible. So I'm just curious, and honestly, through Mr. Mayor, you know, as a city councillor, we should be informed of this, because we get a lot of comments from people. What's going on with the McKinley School? What's going on? And not just one people or a group, a lot of people are inquiring about this. And I think we, as a group, should be informed and brought up to date of everything that's happened, with the, happening with the McKinley School, and what the future, future brings for it, and what's going to happen, and how long it's going to take. And, you know, that's my concern. Thank you.
So councillor, Mr. Chair, not necessarily with the budget talks, but I agree. Before we really got everyone's hopes up, we wanted to make sure we were able to secure certain funding sources, the biggest one being the REC grant that we have applied for through the Metro Regional REC Center. That's upwards of $15 million to retrofit the McKinley School. It would really be one of the biggest heavy lifts at the school, because if you do a roof for a whole building, if you're having someone help support that entire cost, it takes money off of the cost to the Food Hub and/or early childhood education. If you do a boiler system, if you do an elevator, it helps subdue the cost for the entire project. So before we really went too far ahead, we wanted to make sure that this is something that is attainable. So we've applied for the grant. The hope is we are going to receive good, good word back soon, within the next few months, and then we would have some sort of, a little bit more community input. But the school, through ESF funding, has secured, has set aside a little over $7 million. We have $2 million sitting in Food Hub, Food Hub grant that we have eligible, that we're eligible for. So already, we have close to $9 million without standard REC money. So if we're able to get that and get somewhere in the $25 million, the scope of, the entire scope of what we're kind of architecting, looking at, the architectural thoughts we've had is under $30 million. So that's, that's a huge community investment that would really cost very little when, in the grand scheme of things, and it would beautify the neighborhood, it would do so much for that, that outdated school that really, you know, we, we all dealt, we all received eight to 10 years ago, eight years ago, as an empty building. And the only good use that it's been put to is, right now, a sign department that has now shifted back over to the DPW. At one point, it's really been storage leftovers for every department in the city, and of course, a really thriving boxing program, which we don't want to throw out. They love it there. And yes, as far as any biological concerns or asbestos concerns, there is no exposure to asbestos there. There are, there are pipe concerns in the basement that no one's using, that we would, we certainly wouldn't want to have any activities going on down there right now. But outside of that, the, the, outside of the fact that the space they use is old and dusty, they've done a really nice job, it is, it is safe for them.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one more question, if I may. And I know this is an old issue, and you really weren't involved, but, and I don't know if Dr. Kelly was, way back when, when Dr. Dakin was retiring or when he was involved, you know, he said he wanted to use the building, and which we didn't have a problem with, and we didn't know if he was going to move his offices, his administration offices in there, especially where the high school is not getting any funds back from that and the MSBA. Whatever happened to the $2 million, $2.5 million he promised?
You know, I'd have to go back and ask him, and I know that that's something that I remember being pitched to the council. Rich Viskay might want to try and find it, but what I will say is, so much of the holdback on really sending out too much information was, we were keeping McKinley in mind if we had to do a central administration office for the schools. So much was reliant on that large, the high school process, that we were just kind of holding on to that piece as, it might have to be something else. It might have to be another school, it might have to be something repurposed, so we were really holding off. Actually, believe it or not, even Mr. Viskay and I have talked about, could that be, you know, this is pie in the sky thinking, could that be a future city hall if this building ever had to be retrofitted or had some severe damage, because we know how old it is? I don't want to have to go there. I really hope I'm never in the city when we have to plan building a new city hall, as far as the mayor, but there's all these thoughts on how do we, how do we best use our city properties.
Councillor, to answer your question, the $2.5 million that was authorized for the McKinley School was repurposed by this body to fund the DPW facility. It was initially at $22.5 million, and then we authorized the transfer of that, that fund, the building of the DPW when we got the bids, and so we just repurposed that debt. So that authorization for the McKinley no longer exists, and it's part of the debt service for the DPW building.
That's good to know. You know, like, a lot of this stuff, we don't hear on a normal basis. You know, we pick it up as we go along in budget hearings like this, but nothing ever comes up to us to inform us of anything. You know, so, you know, I question that, and hopefully that better communication will continue.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The $2.5 million was a subject that Councillor Novoselvsky and I were discussing, and I've been accusing Paul Dakin of not keeping his commitment, so it seems that he did keep his commitment. So I have to apologize publicly, because I was not informed that this money was given and used. So that was educational for me tonight, and my apologies for saying that somebody did not keep their commitment, because it appears he has. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And Dr. Kelly, thank you for your presentation. Just a couple quick questions. As far as transportation, we see it's gone up a little bit, and that's actually good news. Is, I know it was a big concern last year, is that going to continue to be like a runaway concern, or is it starting to level out?
It is starting to level out, finally, thankfully, and we are still looking at other opportunities and other alternatives that we might offer to students. One thing that we're looking into right now is the cost difference between the, the cost of having in-district transportation for high school students that are not special needs and don't need specialized transportation, what we're spending on that versus if we got them, and I'm going to forget the name of them, but it's like a T-70 pass for the MBTA that gives them free transit use. And we're thinking about, especially when we're at a new building at Wonderland, which is going to have the T right across the street and the commuter rail right behind it, those kids, if they had those passes, would be much more able to access downtown Boston or opportunities on the North Shore to do internships and other pieces like that. So it's not cheap, it's $30 a month per pupil, but the students are really pushing for that as well. And one of the things that we've talked about, not for this year, because we're a little bit tight on budget, but what I'm hoping is going to happen is that next year, in year five of the Student Opportunity Act, we're going to see something closer to the kind of increase that we saw in fiscal '24. This year, we know that we were constrained because of how the inflation impacted Chapter 70 calculations, and that impacts Student Opportunity Act. So we're hoping to see a greater jump next year, and that's when we would look at at least a pilot for students who are doing internships, involved in athletics, and have to get from one side of the city to the other for a practice. We don't provide transportation to practice, only to games and things like that, and kids who are working. And at least give those kids the passes that they can ride the MBTA, which should reduce our need for the regular type of yellow school buses that we have running around. reduce our need for the regular type of yellow school buses that we have running around the city right now.
That's, that's a great idea. I, I'm pretty sure it's used in the City of Boston for a lot of their schools.
It is, yep. All of their middle and high school kids have them.
Ah, so I, I think it's a great idea. I, I didn't even think they'd get a, a cheap discount in the summertime to, to use it to continue when schools are in session, and so I love the idea. As far as City Lab, now that we've seen a whole year of it in, in complete year, how is that going?
It's going incredibly well. There are 10 students who graduated City Lab this year. I'm going to forget the exact number, but Dr. Mulligan said at act graduation, the, the number of college credits that they're leaving high school with is just incredible.
Amazing.
And they're, and they're going off to colleges and doing great things, and some kids are finding their passion in the, in the arts. We have a partnership with Artists for Humanity that is just incredible, and the kids go to Zoomx in East Boston and learn about radio and recording and, and all of those pieces. So the variety of options that the kids have is just incredible, and it really is a school that's designed to identify where the kids' strengths are and amplify those. I think we all know, and I've talked to the council before about my own experience, where our traditional school system just does not work for some kids. And instead of trying to do the same thing over and over and over and over, we need to really start thinking about how we make these phenomenal humans who go on and do incredible things in their life feel, feel like they're phenomenal before they find that discovery of what it is that's a passion in them, because it's, it's not fair to have them go through 12 or 13 years of education feeling like they're less than. That diminishes the human spirit, and that's what we, that's what City Lab does for kids.
Amazing. Thank you very much, Dr. Kelly.
And just one last thought, if I could, thank the school committee who voted to approve this budget last Monday or Tuesday, I forget which day now, I can't keep the day straight. And also a thank you to our CFO, Matt Cruz, who works very closely with, with Mr. Viskey, who also deserves a thanks, and Assistant Superintendent Okaba, who helped a lot with the budget as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
Up next is the Northeast Regional Vocational School District budget.
Rich Viskey, CFO, 201 Broadway. On behalf of the North Shore Vocational School, I'm here to answer any questions. Most of you know that we are the largest member of the North Shore Vocational School. We make up 20.5% of that student population, which means we are allocated the cost of 20.5% of that school, which is in your budget as operating costs. You'll also see as part of the budget, there is a capital expense of over $1 million. That is the high school that is in the process of being built. That full debt service is scheduled to come on next year, in fiscally, at 2026. Those costs have been incorporated into our long-range financial plan, but as it is right now, they are in construction, so it is a partial debt payment. Again, you have all the information from Jay Paco and Dave DeBarry from the Vocational School in your packet, but yeah, I didn't answer any questions on the particular dollar appropriation. But again, it's just an assessment from those schools for those charges.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any questions from the council?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my only comments will be that I've been on this council 25 years. I don't think I've got one kid in the VOC, and that doesn't mean I haven't tried. So there's a, there's definitely a problem. We're the largest payer, but I don't feel we're getting treated fairly. I don't know what the problem is, but it's always like, they just didn't make it. They just didn't make it. And it's the kids that I'm advocating for are the ones that need it the most. So that's my, that's just a comment, and I don't, I know you don't have an answer for that, and I hope somebody has an answer for it somewhere down the line because there's something wrong when, i- if you have to be that good a student to get in there, and we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I can say to that matter is that I know that by building a new high school, they will increase their capacity, which hopefully will allow more kids the opportunity to go there. But again, I don't know the process by which they accept it.
And, and the new high school is going to have some trades in it, according to one of the new school committee members. So there's hope on the horizon, but that, that's a true statement that I have not officially got one kid in, and, and it isn't that I didn't try.
Thank you, Counselor. Rich, just got one quick question. So, and you might not know the answer to this. It's, so the, the VOC was supposed to help us do dugouts at the baseball field? Do you know anything about that, or if it's gone cold, if we're moving forward, if it's not happening?
I, I do know that there was money put aside for materials for the, for building of those dugouts, but all the particulars about that, I think it was a project that was going to be helped out by the DPW, which will be in tomorrow, so they may have more info, but I can certainly follow up and, and get some info as well.
Thank you very much, Rich.
I do know that they are helping over at the historic building and rewiring that. So there's definitely some work being done by the VOC kids, I just don't know about the dugout.
Thank you very much, and they have done excellent work at the historical building.
You stuck with me for the rest of the night, Hannah.
Next up is auditing treasurer-collector.
I don't know what budget you want to do first. I am going to present on behalf of Kathy Bowden, who couldn't make it tonight, so I will be happy to go over the treasurer-collector budget, all the auditing budget, whatever one you like first, and I'll do all the fixed costs after that. So just let me know where you want to start, and we'll, we'll go over it.
We'll go with the treasurer's budget first.
Okay, so for the treasurer's office, we, we were able to reduce some of our full-time equivalents. I think a lot of the technology that we've been implementing, especially in the financial software of the city, we are, in the finance department, one of the few departments that's actually seeing decreases in FTEs. Last year, the auditing department reduced our staff by one FTE. Kathy has already reduced hers by two FTEs, and we continue to become more efficient with the integration of our financial software. So we're happy to report that these investments are actually paying off in the long run on staffing, but most of the treasurer's office are contracted services for banking services and otherwise. She runs a great department. It's, it's, both offices are separate. We do have the collectors' office on the first floor of City Hall, which is a five, five-person operation down there, and the balance of those employees are upstairs in the treasurer's office doing the tax title and departmental turnovers and managing the funds, all the trust funds that the city's managed by the, the treasurer's office. I can't thank Kathy enough. She's been a great employee, been here a long time, and like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of that department with regard to the appropriation request.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions from the council?
It's obviously one of the best-run departments in the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Rich. Please let Ms. Bowden know where, appreciate her.
I sure will. Thank you.
Onto auditing.
Thank you. Again, I'll try to spare you guys all the narratives that have been submitted in the, in the budget there, but you may want to pay attention to some of the goals and accomplishments. In particular, we did try to put a little bit in there about OPA funds and the use of those funds and where we stand with those. We've just about wrapped up committing most of those dollars of the $30 million we've received. As far as operation costs go, we are, the auditing department, as well as the budget office, we are pretty lean. There's five of us total, including myself, so we, we lost one employee through attrition. We decentralized our invoice entry. We used to enter every invoice for the city. Over the past two years, we've decentralized that through our upgrades in our MUNIS system, so it's really helpful to have departments enter their own invoices, and now we're truly auditing those as they come, as opposed to doing all the manual labor. So that allowed us to be a little more efficient there. But otherwise, basically have a budget department of one, Asunta Newton, who's a tremendous asset, and three other employees there. I got Miguel, I got Brenda, and I got Kevin Dacey, and I want to give my thanks to them. Run a great department. We handle a lot of work. We, we do a lot of inquiries. We also, Kevin is the liaison to the Unit B Unit of Local 22, which incorporates all his time, but I think we, we run about as lean as we could with the five people we have, and I'm happy to answer any questions on, on the appropriation request for, for my staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions for the council? Okay, on to the next one.
It's going too good right now.
Debt service?
Yeah, debt service, as we talked about when we were talking about the long-range forecast and, and the vote for the high school, I did pass out a 10-year forecast on our operation of the city. Of course, the big, one of the biggest concerns would be the debt service and the ability to fund that high school when it comes online. But basically, the appropriations for this fiscal year are all the debt services for the projects that are ongoing or have been done, excluding the high school. But you'll see an increase this year because we did bring on debt service for the new DPW facility, the new Point of Pines fire station, and also in that debt service is the, uh, debt service for the cost of acquisition of Wonderland. So I'm happy to answer any particular questions. You've got a whole section on debt, which breaks down each item. I did pass out in a prior meeting the debt schedule for every single debt that we have, and when that stuff falls off. But if you have any particular questions, I'm happy to answer them for you tonight.
Thank you, Rich. Great presentation. Do we have any questions from the council? Counselor Zambudo.
I really don't have any questions, especially for this year's budget. I think we're okay. Past that, I'm worried. And I'm, I just, I'm, I'm very hopeful that your projections will come true, but I, I do worry in the future budgets of what I call cuts. I know we're calling, you know, we're raising percentages. My hope is that the inflation comes down below our percentages, but I'm not exactly confident that that's going to happen unless something drastic happens in Washington in November. So I could be a lot more hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Genzo.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Viskey. Debt service, is the sky the limit? Can we just keep borrowing money for all different things? And is, is there any saturation points?
There, there are laws that, that allow you not to borrow a certain amount. We're nowhere near any of those limits, and in our particular case, I don't want to say the sky's the limit. We, we do have debt policies on, you know, we don't want to appropriate too much of our overall operating costs on debt service. We've actually had pretty low numbers with regard to debt service. We're actually ramping up now because we got a lot of construction going on, but no, it's really just something that we manage internally. There's, there's mass general laws that talk about debt that's inside the debt limit and outside the debt limit with regard to levy capacity and such. But no, we, we're not at any danger right now of, of exceeding or breaking any laws with regard to how much debt we have. It's just a matter of how big of a piece of pie that debt would be in regards to all the other operations in the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Any other councils? Thank you very much.
Retirement?
Thank you. As part of my role here as CFO and city auditor, I am the chairman of the board, the retirement board, and the appropriation that is before you is based upon the actuarial funding schedule that's provided to us by PERAC. We've spoken of this before, but the city has to fund by 2040 the entire amount of our unfunded liability of our pensions, which is basically the liability for both the retirees and us active employees that will eventually retire. We hit a nice threshold of 70% funded for fiscal year 2025, and our funding schedule is such that if all the assumptions go well on return on investment and, and mortality rates, et cetera, we're scheduled to be paid up by 2034 on our unfunded liability. Why that's important is because partial, a part of that appropriation request is for the normal cost for the, for the year, fiscal year '25 in this case, but probably 70% of that appropriation has to do with the unfunded liability. So in 2034, that appropriation is scheduled to drop off about $15 million. Again, hopefully, if we hit our rates of return in the market, which I believe our actuarial assumption is 7%, and of course, mortality rates, you know, people live a little longer, so they adjust those rates. But to speak to some of Counselor Zambudo's concerns, a big factor in us planning for this high school is that a significant portion of that retirement assessment will drop off in 2034, which we can then allocate towards debt service and, and other city services as well. But we're kind of bound by the, the appropriation from PERAC. We do reduce that appropriation because all of our grant-funded employees, we make sure we capture full cost on their benefits and on their pension assessment. The federal law says we can charge 9% to a grant for anyone who's paid from a grant, so we're pretty judicious about, you know, someone wants to bring a new grant employee on, we always say, you got to cover the costs of the benefits and, and the salary. So since I've been here, we've really honed in on that. So we bring the cost down a little bit by making sure we charge the grants appropriately, both the schools and the city.
Thank you very much. Another question.
I just wanted to make a comment, and I've said this to you privately, but I want to say it publicly. The office over there is excellent. They have a great group of employees. I just went through the retirement process. It was a smooth process. There wasn't a hitch, and very professional. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and we did hire, some of you may have remembered Sandor, he did go on to a new job. We had a new director, Scott Provinso, from Essex County Retirement, and by all accounts, he's doing a wonderful job, and, and I think he's doing a great job. So thank you, Scott.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. So did you say that the unfunded liability is $15 million, but that will be funded and drop off in 2034? I just want to reiterate that.
Let me look at my forecast and give you the exact number. So basically, for fiscal year 2025, we're looking at $16.6 million. So every year, that's forecasted to go up, and fiscal year 3033, 2033, my apologies, the appropriation peaks out at $23.7 million. That's what's projected. If we are fully funded in 2033, as scheduled, our appropriation for fiscal year '34 is estimated to go down to $8.3 million. So yes, so long as we keep contributing at the pace we're at, we set a funding schedule so that this appropriation goes up 5% every year. So we try to make it so that it fits within the scope of the budget. The actuarial study gives us an unfunded liability amount. We say we can afford to increase it by 5% a year, and that brings us to the point where fiscal year '33 should be, hopefully, the last year that we're paying unfunded liability, and then that $8 million basically represents the normal cost, which is the annual cost of, of retirement of the people who are there. We have to have, we have to represent that we have 100% of our unfunded liability in the bank so that we can bring it down to normal costs.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, yeah. And just one more question. So I know that we're, this office is not on City Hall, it's not located in the City Hall. Is there a reason for that? Do we just not have space for it, or?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. Yeah, the space was tight in City Hall. The retirement board is actually not connected with the city. It's not run, it's run by the board, and we hired the director as a five-member board. I'm ex-official as the chairman of the board, as the city auditor. We have two elected positions, which we just had an election, two firefighters that are incumbent were there. There's one appointment by the mayor, and then the fifth member is picked by the four of us. So that board is autonomous. It, it doesn't report to the mayor, it doesn't report to the council. It's autonomous, and by virtue of the appropriation that you see before you, the cost of the operating, the salaries, et cetera, is in that appropriation. The reason why we moved out of City Hall, one, we needed space here, but more importantly, a lot of people
a lot of people, when they go to retirement, it's kind of a private thing. They don't want everybody knowing their business, they're going in. We found that, for example, if Mr. Argenzio goes in the retirement office to ask about retirement, within 20 minutes, the whole city thinks that he's retiring. So it's really, we find it better practice to have that kind of off of City Hall and try to keep that more of a private conversation for those people contemplating retiring.
I understand. Thank you. And the cost for that, to lease the space, is nominal?
It's $3,500 a month. And I do know that, going back to what Mayor Keefe was saying, there are some thoughts that we may be able to move into the McKinley Building if that's built out, if we do some white box and all that and need some office space. Parking department and retirement would be two prime members to get out of rental situations and get to one of our own buildings. So yeah.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
City's health insurance.
Oof, how long you got? Yeah, health insurance is probably the biggest challenge we have, well, second biggest after funding the high school, I would say. But health insurance costs continue to rise. You know, you hear all this stuff about, you know, trend and health trend and this and that, and we are self-insured, so we pay in as employees and council members, and the city contributes the balance of that. We have health insurance advisors that come in and advise us on where we should set our rates and what things we can do to kind of keep these costs in check. And for this particular fiscal year, they are actually proposing a 10 and 1/2% increase to the active plans and a 19% increase to the retiree plans, which would have caused a lot of chaos in this budget. So luckily for us, we have a pretty healthy trust fund balance, so we use some of our trust fund balance to buy those rates down so that we are only able to, we were able to hold it at 6% for active plans and 9% for retirees. We did have successful negotiations a few years back with the PEC, which is the Public Employee Commission, which is the governing body that can negotiate health insurance changes on behalf of all city employees and all retirees. For those who don't know, it's pretty much made up of the president of each particular union, both on the school side and the city side, and the retirees get 10% vote in that as well. So 10% retirees and 90% is a portion out based upon membership. So the schools are about 45% of that. Police and fire come before that, and then some of the smaller unions are there. So our agreement expires at the end of this fiscal year, just like most of the collective bargaining agreements. We are actively in negotiations with the PEC. Again, never pleasant to kind of talk about how we can, you know, make cost savings because usually a lot of that is, you know, cost sharing, allocation. But there are some things that we think we can do to help stabilize those costs, and those negotiations are going on currently. What we did negotiate the last one is that on the last day of this fiscal year, everybody gets that 0.75 raise that you see in your budget, and in return, the city's contribution for HMO plans went from 80% to 77.5%, which means an employee, instead of being 20%, is picking up 22.5%. Those cost savings are very helpful in perpetuity because even if it's a dollar, a dollar trade, if the cost of wages doesn't increase as quickly as the cost of health insurance, we can provide some benefits. But it's really important for us to maintain quality benefits for our employees, but at what cost is really the question. I try to explain to people who ask, it's, you know, total compensation is your salary and your benefits. If we have really, really rich benefits, it's hard to give really, really great raises. So we try our best to balance it, and, you know, we have some spirited debates with the PEC, but I think we're in the process of trying to put together a long-term six-year deal that may coincide with the construction of the high school. So those conversations are being had right now, but otherwise, it's a simple formula of how many people we have versus what the percentages are, and we fund it accordingly, and that's what you see before you.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions from the council? Counselor Argenzio.
When you say we're self-funded, do we carry any kind of insurance policy in case several members have catastrophic illnesses?
Yeah, we sure do. We procure out stop-loss insurance, we call it, and right now, if, once we hit $250,000 on any individual in the plan, the stop-loss insurance kicks in, and those stop-loss insurance rates are built into our premiums that you see every year.
Thank you, Rich. Any other counselors?
Okay, just one question, Rich. It's to do with health insurance, and is the PEC, is the PEC the only one that you have the ability to negotiate with? So you're not negotiating with other companies or holders, just that one entity?
Yeah, before my arrival here, I believe Mayor Embracino brought before the council Section 19 of the Mass General laws that allowed for the creation of the PEC and establish that body as the body that negotiates health insurance for the entire city and the retirees. But they kind of govern, we're not allowed to unarate or make any changes in, you know, copays and splits and such like that. It all has to be done through a PEC. So we're self-insured. We use Blue Cross and Harvard, but basically, they just charge us an administration fee for sending the bills and such. But again, if we set the rates too low and we have a bad year, our fund balance goes down, and if we have a good year, our fund balance goes up. I think I've said this before, but ironically, during COVID, we actually had some good years because a lot of people stopped going to doctors, and we had some of that CARES money and other stuff that offset some of the cost of health insurance. What we're seeing now is really everybody catching up on their elective surgeries and all the things they were putting off. So we're trending down, and so again, we hope that our workers and our retirees stay healthy. I know one of the ideas behind creating the Health and Wellness Center was that hoping that a lot of people in the city would go there, get a little healthier, and hopefully keep the cost down. But we're really, we're just at the risk of whoever may get sick and what those costs are. But we do have a pretty healthy balance in our trust and hope to maintain that. But if we keep buying down rates every year, you know, that'll dwindle. So we're in a little precarious situation right now. So we can do our best to keep those health plans, quality health plans, and try to keep the costs stable.
Thank you, and just.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Argenzio.
Could you send me a list of who comprises that PERAC committee?
Okay, yeah, I can send you a list of, it's basically the president of every union, but there is a five-member board that represents them. I call them the E-Board or the Negotiating Board, and I can send you that list for sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
Next up is FICA.
All right, FICA is pretty straightforward. 1.45% of everybody's pay has to go to the federal government for that Medicare FICA tax, and that's our best estimate on the amount of money we're going to need to cover payroll for fiscal year 2025. And much like all the grant employees, not only do we get the health insurance in the retirement assessment, we do take that 1.45% out of all grant employees, too. So do our best to try to keep that number as low as possible, but pretty much a fixed cost.
Any questions from the council?
I'm actually going to ask you one more about the Health and Wellness Center. So if an employee signs up for Health and Wellness Center, through the insurance, we get a rebate? The employees get a rebate on Health and Wellness Center? Is that incentivizing for employees to sign up for the Health and Wellness Center?
Yeah, right now, if anyone in the city has health insurance through the city, I think an annual membership is $300. Our health benefit provides $300 reimbursement. So pretty much anyone who's listening out there who works for the city, if they're not a member and they don't use that benefit at a different gym, essentially, the cost of joining that gym would be nothing if you have the city's health insurance plan, not necessarily for your whole family, but for one member. But those are the types of things that we might be able to talk about through the PEC negotiations as far as enhancing the benefits and some of the trade-offs there.
Excellent, Rich, and thank you very much for your time.
Has that recently gone up? I thought it was $150.
Yeah, we negotiated to increase that to $300.
And is that for any employee in any gym?
That's any gym. Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
And lastly, property and casualty insurance.
I forgot I had one left. Yeah, as part of our department, our budget office also is responsible for the property and casualty insurance in the city. We have an advisor that helps us negotiate with carriers on our rates. We did do a full RFP a couple of years back that brought the cost down. Right now, we're in negotiations. Property and casualty insurance is such a pain because you don't get a quote until the last minute. They don't give anything early, and our biggest challenge these days now is that we're a coastal community, and last year, we were running into, they were saying that they're not going to insure anyone 10 miles from the coast for wind damage. Through a lot of effort and negotiations, we were able to get wind coverage in the city. But, you know, the valuations of property, as they go up, obviously, it costs more to insure these buildings. New DPW facility just came on, so we had builder's risk insurance, but once the building is occupied, we have to bring that onto our policy. Right now, what you see is my best estimate on what our fiscal year 2025 cost will be. We've been pretty good about not having to come in for supplemental appropriations on our PNC insurance, but it really is something that's becoming more and more challenging, especially being a coastal community and the valuation's going up so much. But the number before you is my best estimate on what these numbers will be when they're finalized. We have a meeting Thursday to try to finalize some of these numbers. But my hope is that the appropriation request should be sufficient.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Counselor Kelly.
Just what you said about getting coverage for being 10 miles from the ocean and all that was difficult for wind damage and things like that. The location of the new high school, is that going to be a big increase considering its location regarding insurance?
I mean, I'm not sure if the location is going to drive it more than just the valuation of that building once complete. It's definitely in a flood zone, so there'll be some flood insurance. But right now, at this point, I haven't even really contemplated what the insurance would be on that. But when the construction does start, you usually get a builder's risk policy. That builder's risk policy covers that building until it's complete, and then we will get full coverage on that. And I don't have a gradient sphere right now, but certainly more to follow on that. I don't think that location versus any other location in the city is worse for wind per se. I think it's probably more about the flood that may be more concerning than the wind because the entire city is within that. You know, we're on the coast, so they don't say West Riviera is good and East Riviera is no good, but I think it's more the, maybe the flood zone that would be a concern to me than the location of that for wind damage versus another location in the city.
It just seems like that will be costly, just for the sheer scope and size of the building in addition to the flood zone.
Yeah, $500 million, I'm sure it's going to be a pretty penny.
All right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Rich, and that concludes Tuesday night's fiscal 2025 budget.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it.